So the public notice was just read. Do we have the proponents present?
Is, so we are on Wyman Farms?
Correct.
Is John Grenier or Alex Ricov there? Or Steve?
Hi Bernie, this is John. I didn't get a, an invite.
Oh.
I just dialed in, but if you could send me an invite, I can, I can go on video.
Absolutely, I apologize about that. It is being sent now. You can also just talk, John, you don't need to be on video.
Okay, oh no, that's fine, that's fine. Probably better off for everybody if they don't see me.
Yes, would you like me to put up the plan while you speak?
Please.
Yeah, I can't, I don't have, I don't have the capability of seeing it on TV.
Oh, so you're gonna have to invite him, Bernie.
Yeah.
Yeah, I invited him.
Okay.
Alright, let me, you know, let me just hang up and then I'll go on my email and I'll, and I'll log in.
Thank you.
Alright, one second please, thanks.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
This is Paul George in Abotta. I just wanted to let you know that there's no video connection.
To Shrewsbury's cable?
Media connection, yeah.
Okay, I.
Nothing's being, nothing's being shown.
Uh, Mark Sarah is on the line. Mark, if you're there, um, we are waiting for that to be shown.
I'm sorry, that's not a possibility tonight, I was.
Okay.
Wasn't on my radar, I'm very, I am trying to record it at home, I apologize for that.
Yes, and the, um, this was, I was reviewing this as well, Mr. Chairman. The law states that this is a recorded meeting, so the record of the meeting will still be recorded and put up. And minutes will be available and that that is allowable under the remote meeting statute.
Good, thank you.
I'm, I'm here, Bernie.
Okay, John, uh, I will share the presentation if you will. Uh, one second. Okay, so can everyone see the first page?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Grenier, please introduce yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of Wyman Farm, um, this is John Grenier to present, um, what are, we believe minor modifications to the approved site plan for the Wyman, Wyman Farm, uh, over 55 development. Um, so what you're seeing now is, is the layout plan. And, um, what we are proposing is, um, you'll see in red, um, if you go back to that layout plan, Bernie. Pan over, yeah. Um, what, what's shown as units, uh, number 29 and 31, that is the building in red on the right. Uh, we are proposing to shift that slightly to the left, um, toward what would be, um, unit number 27. And the purpose of that would be to give that building a little bit more relief. There's an existing retaining wall, um, around where the back sunroom is on unit number 31. So to give that a little bit more distance to that retaining wall, they're looking to shift that over, um, a little less than four feet. The, the setback between, um, that building and unit number 27 on the original approved plan was 14.2 feet. Um, and we are proposing it to be 10.3 feet. Um, so that, that's, um, and we are allowed to go up to 10 feet, um, between buildings, uh, with the permit that we got from the zoning board, um, back a few years ago. So, uh, that's just one layout, um, shift. Uh, we did get, um, some comments from Graves Engineering regarding that and they just wanted to make sure that, uh, we, we actually shifted it from what we originally submitted to the board. He wanted us to shift it away from the, the roadway by a foot, just to make sure that there were no issues with cars parking in the driveway in front and, and, um, sticking out into the street in any way. So we shifted it actually back, back a foot from what we had originally submitted, um, based on comments from Graves Engineering. Um, now if you can go to the, to the grading plan, the next sheet, Bernie, please. Um, the, if you zoom in over, I guess, towards, right there, yeah, please. Um, there is a, a retaining wall that is existing behind units 13, 15, 17, and 19. And, um, with the backyards of the, these units and between that and the, the retaining wall, um, the contractor noticed that, especially in the springtime, it could get a little bit soggy out there in the backyards, um, because it's rather flat. So what they wanted to do was basically just install the French drain, um, just to be able to capture any of the surface runoff, so that there's no chance of it ever puddling back there. And there's an existing structure, um, just to the back right of unit 19. Um, so that would be able to drain any of that surface water. They're gonna put a perforated pipe, um, in some stone and that would tie into that existing drainage structure. That's to the back right of number 19 and the purpose of that is just to make sure that the, the backyards don't get soggy. Um, you know, when we get a lot of rain or, or in the springtime. And then, uh, if you can pan to the right, Bernie, please, over to the, that where the trees are. Um, over here, what you'll see is, um, this is an as-built condition. Um, the contractor or the developer, uh, installed evergreens, um, at the top of that slope on the right-hand side of, uh, what's shown as unit number 33. And on our design plan, uh, we had located those trees kind of along the edge of, of, uh, the easement. And, um, they were on top of, of a little bit of a berm. And, uh, when they installed that, the berm is a little bit wider and you can see there's a little bit more grading going into the, into the easement. And, uh, they shifted, you can see the trees in the, in the center portion of the, of the, uh, of what was installed. Some of those trees, um, were shifted a little bit further back and that was to make sure that they weren't too close to the edge of the slope. And the berm was a little bit wider just to make sure that there was no issues with the root falls. If they were too close to the edge of the slope, that, you know, there could be a possibility that they wouldn't get, um, the proper water and it, it could affect the, them surviving. So when the landscape was doing that, they ended up widening up the berm and shifting the trees a little bit to the right. But the proper number of trees and type of trees were all installed and those are all installed right now and they're growing very well. So, um, that was a minor shift from what was approved. Um, but the, the purpose was to make sure that you're gonna get a, a, a good evergreen buffer that's gonna be, uh, growing in the long term. And, and to be honest, when we show trees, um, obviously they, they're installing the right number. You know, to, to say you're gonna pinpoint a tree in the same exact location as what's shown on the site plan really isn't the purpose of it. The purpose is to provide an evergreen screen that's gonna serve the purpose of, um, providing good year-round screening and, and that is what was done. So, um, that's everything that we are proposing for modifications. Um, I'd put it back to the chair if you have, anybody has any questions or comments.
Okay, um, I'm gonna start, uh, I'm sure there's gonna be quite a few questions, but let's start probably with the easier side. So, um, Mr. Truman, can you comment on the trees aspect of it? I believe that it's, um, is an easement, um, concern, possibility, that somebody is not muted.
Correct, Mr. Chairman, um, as, as you recall, I'd sent a memo to the developer back in, um, I'm just actually looking now, last, yes, last September. Um, we had, we had gone out there at the Towns Ave Estates at the easement and it became apparent that the, um, both the grading and the trees were within the easement, which obviously was a variation of what was on the plan. Haven't reviewed it, we have no issues with that, uh, the caveat being on the understanding that if the town ever has to go in to repair that sewer, you know, we have to remove those trees if the town would not repair the trees, they would have to be replaced by the, uh, association. I mean, the sewer in that corner is pretty deep, so I don't know that we would ever go in there and open and cut it. But, uh, we have no issues with it, we just want to make sure the developer was aware that there was an encroachment to the easement.
Okay, very good, thank you. Uh, Bernie, can we go back to the plan, please? Then Bernie, if you just make some noise, it'll come back to you on the video. There we go, yes, okay. So the slight move of the unit explanation is for, for more distance behind the retaining wall, is that correct? Uh, you're, you're muted, John.
Right about that?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, if you notice on, on the plan, the location of that retaining wall two is shown on the plan. And in grade back, you can see where the, the unit was originally proposed. It was, it's pretty close to that, to that wall number two. So it was to give a little bit of a shift to the, to the left, so to speak, so it, it has a little bit more separation to that, to that small wall.
Okay, are you at all concerned being within three inches of the minimum requirement after these things are built, that you're gonna be in compliance?
There, the, uh, the surveyors are pinning the foundations and as soon as they, um, install one, you know, they'll be pulling, uh, tapes off of that to ensure that there's no issue with, uh, it being less than 10 feet.
Okay, and those, I, are those units are sprinkled correctly?
All of them are sprinkled.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm begging the, uh, the board's indulgence before, uh, I, I ask them for questions. I just had some items on my mind, so can we slide over to the retaining wall, Bernie, please?
Uh, yes. Oops. There.
Alright, so, correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, so the French drain was already installed?
It was.
And what, who made the decision to install the French drain without getting, um, approval from either the planning board or the planning department?
Um, from what I understand, Mr. Chairman, is, um, Alex Ricov is the, he's the job super. Um, and I, and correct me if I'm wrong, Andy, I believe he did, um, mention it to, I believe, the engineering department. Um, and I'm not sure if he mentioned it to Bernie as well, but had mentioned to them that they were looking to, uh, make sure that they didn't have any wet conditions in the backyards and get it soggy, so they were looking to, um, you know, as more of just a, a, a betterment to, to install that. And I believe that, you know, they're under the gun to, uh, finish off, they're trying to get landscaping done and getting everything done back there. So I think it was his impression that he didn't really think it was a big deal. Um, and I mean, basically they're digging a, a trench, a trench along the backyard and installing some stone and a four-inch perforated pipe. So doesn't seem, really seem like it, it would be, in my opinion, uh, it, it would be an improvement. It's not like a, a big change that would, would alter the scope of the project in any way, shape, or form.
Alright, I don't know, Mr. Truman and Mr. Cahill, why not respond to that before I continue?
Um, yeah, I mean, Alex did come in and meet with Bernie and myself, um, not only in regards to this, but obviously there was still at that time the outstanding issue of the trees and the grading behind, um, wall number three. So, yeah, we did have a discussion, we said, yes, you know, we'll have to come in for a site man, site plan modification, just, you know, make sure everything that you require is shown on the plan. I mean, there was no suggestion that, yeah, go ahead and do it before you get approved from the planning board. It's just, yeah, we agreed and on paper and theory what they showed was, was fine, but, you know, still he's come back for a site plan modification. I think Bernie has anything else to add?
Okay, thank you. So I'm, I'm a bit perplexed, uh, Mr. Grenier. We know that of this entire site, the area that is the deepest of concern is that particular retaining wall. And, um, my mind is blown that somebody would go off and do anything in front of that without getting approval. Because we understand that there's a lot of consternation between the understanding of the stability of that, of that, um, of that wall. So I'm, I'm a bit miffed, because I remember telling you however many meetings ago, when it was when you came before us with a de minimis change of similar to the use that you want to do as far as the two buildings, that you had already done it. And I said, please, come before us and ask us before you do it. And that did not happen here. And this is compounded a little bit more in my view, because now there's damage on the wall and it looks like the wall is in serious, serious, um, save, serious safety concern as far as I'm concerned. Um, I'm sure you've seen some of the photo, I'm sure you've been on the site, but I've seen some of the photos and it's, it's deeply concerning to me. So I don't know if you want to give us an update as to what's going on relative to the wall itself.
Um, yeah, and I, I have been out there, uh, Mr. Chairman, I've been out there several times and I was just out there this afternoon. Um, and I was actually out there with the engineer who designed the wall, um, as, as well as the contractors. And, um, just as far as the trench is concerned, to put that to bed, um, they did get, um, a stamped, um, memo that has been submitted to the planning department and has been submitted to the building department, um, saying that that trench, um, has, there's no issue with having that trench. In fact, it's, it's a benefit, but because it keeps that area dry, um, you won't have any issues with saturated soils back there. So, um, he had a stamped memo that he submitted, um, to both the planning department and the building department. Um, as far as the wall.
Yeah, cool, hold on a second. With all due respect, that's just one person's opinion, right? The reason why we want to have site plan review is we want to have a peer reviewer understand similar things that that person made his judgment on. Is that, that's my understanding as to why we have peer review. And in my view, this is just me personally, I think any work that's being done against that wall absolutely needs to have a review. And, and I'm, I'm gonna encourage you that no more work needs to be done on that or any work that's being done on the site needs to be reviewed prior to any work being done. This is, I mean, this, uh, when, the wall is, is in serious problems. And, and I've got some deep concerns about it, so I'm sorry, you can continue now.
Alright, so, so it's back, back to the wall. Um, the, uh, the contractor noticed that there were, um, some cracks in some of the blocks. Um, they got ahold of the manufacturer of the wall, they got ahold of the engineer who designed the wall. And, um, what was, they actually had a, a certified, um, a certified representative, representative of the wall manufacturer come out, um, to look at the wall. And the, the certified, um, person who is licensed or, or, or certified by the manufacturer to, to work on these walls, he, um, knocked out one of the blocks and, uh, he, stone started coming out. So he went and knocked out a couple more blocks, which he probably shouldn't have done, so they, they told him to stop. Um, he was the certified guy from the manufacturer, they told him to stop. They called the wall engineer and the manufacturer again. And, uh, what they, um, and this is being supervised by the wall, is the wall engineer, is there, any of the, any of the block that have hairline cracks in them, they're drilling through the, through that block, spraying in basically what would be a, a, a spray foam that would hold the stone where it is, pull that block out, then they can replace the block and, and epoxy it, so. Um, and again, these are some hairline fractures, but they want to make sure that there is no issues with the wall. Um, the wall will be, um, it, it will be guaranteed by the, uh, by the manufacturer. This is how the, the manufacturer suggests that, um, this has happened before. This is how they, um, make any, any wall repairs. Um, they did have an incident with the, the supposed, uh, you know, guy who's qualified by the, uh, by the manufacturer, but, um, as soon as he started doing that, they got rid of him and, and they, they called up the, the manufacturer and the, and the, um, design engineer again. So that's how they're proceeding. Um, the wall will be guaranteed or, or warranted by the manufacturer and they have the, uh, the walls, the, the design engineer out there and he's inspecting and he's certifying that everything that they're doing is correct. So, um, they did have a couple of issues with some of the blocks and they're making sure that it's done properly and done by the book and, and it will be certified by the, by the manufacturer. So that's where that stands.
Okay, um, I, I've received some, I'm sure you've got copied on some, uh, communications from the planning department and engineering department that, um, the town is going to require that this whole thing be reviewed by a peer reviewer. Is that your understanding?
Um, I, I did not know that. Um, uh, they, they've had some conversations with, uh, you know, some of the site supers and, and that offline and, um, if that's the case, then that, that's the case.
I don't know if Bernie or, um, Andy, if you want to expand a bit on that?
So there's not really too much to tell, uh, can you hear me okay, Steve?
Yes, yeah.
Uh, there's not too much to tell except that, um, well, your summary is actually pretty good. So, um, in light of what's happened to the wall, uh, the engineering, planning, and building departments sent a joint email out to the developer of the site saying that the wall, so we need from their geotechnical, geotechnical engineer, um, an explanation about just what's gone on and then more importantly, or as importantly, um, what the solution's going to be from their side. So repair or demolition and reconstruction of that wall. So the, the responsibility is going to be with that geotechnical engineer of the developer to provide the town, um, just as it did before, uh, two years ago, when we went through the whole discussion about retaining walls on site. Um, their geotechnical submitted, um, their plan and their designs and their calculations to the planning board and those calculations were then passed on to, um, the planning board's peer reviewer outside geotechnical, um, peer reviewer for their review comments and so on. So that was also in my planning letter, uh, the planner letter that I sent out, um, a couple of weeks ago, um, regarding this as well, that anything that is going to touch on these walls needs to go through that peer review process, just as it did at the last site plan modification. So nothing different in process, it's the same process we used before, um, we're using that same process again to be consistent. Um, and our biggest concern is always is the safety of not just the future residents going to be living next to that wall, but, um, abutters as well who could be impacted by it. So it's, it's looking at everything and our primary concern as always is the safety of the residents and their wellbeing. Um, safety to person and safety to property. So that's kind of where we've left it, um, and also why, um, in my letter, I encouraged that the board, um, continue this once we've gone through the public hearing process, of course, tonight, to continue this till, um, the June meeting. So I don't know if Andy had anything to add, wanted to add to that.
Thank you, Bernie. No, I think, I think you've refreshed the minds, it's, it's kind of a somewhat a moving target and we kind of keep on top of it, yeah. But Bernie said, our, our biggest concern is the safety of, you know, the abutters and future residents and those, and those units based on the current state of that wall.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Truman. Um, does anyone on the board have any other questions that I haven't covered? I'll start with, uh, Mr. Rodolakus. Oh, Mr. Rodolakus is actually recusing himself, my apologies, uh, Mr. Jerry.
Uh, no, I have nothing further, I think you've covered, uh, you covered the concerns that I had and just really waiting for more information, I guess, from the geotechnical expert as to whether or not the wall is able to be repaired or needs to be replaced.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Uh, to echo your sentiments, obviously, um, and everyone else's sentiments, that, you know, this safety of the neighbors and that the people who are gonna be living at the site is the most important thing. Obviously, this has been going on a few years, as you said, Mr. Boulay, we ask for permission, not forgiveness. Um, and I think that this is a perfect example of what we don't want. So until we have any more information, I'm not ready to make a determination on what I think is right or to go by what the geotechnical expert thinks or the town engineer.
Thank you. Um, I've pretty much covered what I have. Um, this is a public hearing, um, if there is anyone in the members of the public that wish to be heard, um, I will put a caveat on that. Um, obviously, you've been, uh, listening to the questions that have come from the board. So if the question is similar in nature to what we were already asked, I would ask that you please hold on to that question until there's more information being provided by the applicant. So, uh, Bernie, I don't know if you have a list of names, uh, for abutters that wish to be heard or not?
I do not, but if you are there and you wish to ask a question, I believe it's to press star six to unmute your telephone to weigh in.
Yes, I'm Paul George in Abotta, Timor North.
Yes, Mr. George.
Yes, um, I was just wondering if I could just give a quick overview of the situation, uh, which abuts my property and how everything, and how everything came to be what it is today. Um, we started out with a special permit for the whole project, which was approved originally. Then in January of 2017, they went to the zoning board of appeals for a variance to put the buildings closer together in order to, what they said was supposedly to keep the buildings away from the abutters to give them more room. Then back in, uh, after that was approved by the zoning board of appeals, they came back, the developer came back to the planning board for approval of garages and three-season porches. Uh, that was then approved by the planning board, which I had appealed. And the, uh, the garages were denied, but the porches were approved. And now that I'm looking at what transpired since the three-season porches were, turned out to be additional living space to this project on each unit with, uh, foundations and cellars underneath them. So I think they've gone above and beyond what was approved. Then on, uh, September 25th, we filed an appeal on the porches that are being done. And after that, we came to the original planting of the trees at my property. The original planting of the trees were off the easement and in the so-called berm area, I don't know why he calls it a berm. I, it is actually the exact, um, elevation that is on the elevation plan of the site plan that was approved. And they ranged from 418 elevation to 420, all the way down to the midway section of the sewer easement. The plantings were supposed to be done off the sewer easement, at the edge of the sewer easement. They were notified on May 1st by Bernie Cahill, wall number three. The George property has not been constructed in accordance with the approved site plan to the planning board. The wall, wall was shown to be approved at three and a half feet with jut netting around one and a half to one slope. The wall was constructed at 5.5 feet with no building permit and boulders three feet in, uh, size on top of the wall. Therefore, the project was in violation of condition number four of the planning board decision. After that was sent to the developer, on, uh, May 3rd, the onsite, onsite slopes and retaining wall shall be constructed in accordance with the plan as approved by the planning board. No changes should be made unless you went in front of the, for site plan modification. Changes were made to this, they took the boulders off the wall and they supposedly taken two levels of the wall off to make it to three and a half feet. I'm not sure if that was done or not. After that, after that was done, they cut into the, they repl, took the trees out, cut the slope into the sewer easement, which was not approved, and put the, uh, replanting of the new trees. After that, uh, work was done, I notified engineering department what had happened. They came, uh, after that, they were notified, the town manager, assistant town manager, the engineering department, and the planning department came down and surveyed and they looked at what was happening. and the planning department came down and surveyed and they looked at what was happening over there. They noticed that there was something wrong. They sent the engineering department down to survey the sewer easement. And they found that the the slope was cut into the sewer easement, which was not approved. And the trees were placed directly on the easement, which was not approved. And I don't think that's, that was should have been done without approval of the planning board. So where we're at now is I'm proposing that the condition of the elevation of the sewer easement brought be brought back to four hundred and twenty to four hundred and eighteen. The trees brought to the edge of the sewer easement at that elevation because the elevation state on the plan, four hundred and twenty to four hundred and eighteen. And I also want to make sure that the slope that was approved, that one and a half to one is actually one and a half to one. And those are my concerns.
Okay, so noted. What we'll do is ensure that, uh, we do know that there's an as-built plan that will be required when the project is is completed. Um,
I do have a copy of an as-built plan that was submitted.
The properties, this this site is not built yet. It's, there is no as-built plan.
Well, I have one that was submitted.
There was, Mr. Chairman, excuse me, Mr. George, there was an as-built plan submitted just for the slopes and walls on the site. Um, that did show it as a one and a half to one slope. It also showed the trees and the grading being a couple of feet into the easement. So uh,
But I I beg to differ. I think those those trees are more than a couple of feet into the easement. If you, if you came down and actually looked at where the states are and see where the trees are from the edge of the easement, they're more than a couple of feet inside the easement. They're at least a good ten feet inside the easement.
Okay, so so noted, Mr. George.
Well, these are just my concerns.
I understand. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to be heard? All right, I'm gonna take that as a no for now. Um, I I understand, I I agree with Mr. Cahill that I believe that there's a lot of information that still needs to be garnered here. So I would entertain a motion to continue this hearing. I don't know who wants to do that if I, Tim or uh,
Mr. Chairman, uh, John Granier, could I, could I just add one, one more thing?
Sure.
Um, you know, the the developer is um, o- obviously trying to uh, move along with this project. Obviously, with with the um, the situation going on with COVID and everything else, he's trying to make sure and finish this project and obviously do a nice job. Everything that he has done out there um, is is first class. It's, they're high-end units. They're very nice. He has um, many people who are interested in um, moving in. He doesn't want to lose any um, a- any people who have deposits. So I would suggest um, in in the effort to try to keep this, this is a great project. He wants to keep it moving forward. Um, I know that the board has concerns about the wall and there's information that needs to be reviewed. Um, I I would suggest that obviously, the units thirteen, fifteen, seventeen and nineteen, um, those are the most affected because the wall was right behind them. Um, i- if the, if the developer can have his engineers um, regarding the wall, um, coordinate with the town and their consulting engineers and get that straightened out. Um, I I think he does have, is supposed to have a closing on one of those units. Um, I I'm not sure which exact one, but it's one of thirteen, fifteen, seventeen or nineteen. Obviously, he wants to get the wall situation rectified as soon as possible um, with the blessing from the town so that those people can move in. Um, but I would ask that um, his construction of the other units not be affected so that he can move forward on on the other parts of the project. Um, just so he can keep this project going. Um, nobody wants anything to stall right now. It's a great project. He'd like to continue working on it. Um, but just have the understanding that any of the units that um, are adjacent to that wall, that needs to be straightened out with the town and their uh, reviewing consulting engineers um, before they they, you know, have people moving into those units.
Thank you for that. I I I I understand your position on that. Unfortunately, I'm not in agreement with you on that. I I am s- so deeply concerned about the stability of that wall. I I personally need to have the peer review completed. We need to look at these plans. We need to understand what's going on. If I was the buyer of this house, I certainly wouldn't be closing on it if I saw the wall with everything leaching out of it the way that I saw those photos. So as far as I'm concerned, I think continuance is in order. Um, so I'll I'll go back to the board and ask for the motion to continue the hearing.
Uh, yeah, I would, uh, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, no, Mr. George, we are, we are already past that. I'm I'm back on. Mr. Jerry, please.
Uh, yes, Mr. Boulay, I'd like to make a motion uh, that we continue uh, the site plan modification for Wyman Farms nine thirty-five Main Street uh, to the June fourth meeting of the planning board.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, I'll go around the horn. Uh, Mr. Jerry.
In favor.
Mr. Thomas.
In favor.
Mr. Boulay is in favor. This uh, meeting is continued to next month, June fourth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Uh, the next hearing is a new public hearing for a new two-family dwelling, site plan approval and special permits, Waterview Realty Trust, location fifty-one to fifty-three Bay Drew Bayview Drive. Uh, Mr. Thomas will read the public notice and um, Perner Ru- Ruah will be sitting in as this is a special permit. So Bernie, you're, you're welcome to un- unmute yourself.
Are you ready, Mr. Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
The zoning planning board will hold a public hearing on Thursday evening, May seventh, twenty twenty at seven PM to hear the application of Bayview Drive Realty Trust, PO Box seven forty-nine, Boylston, Mass. O one five oh five. For site plan approval and special permits by the planning board as required by the town's shoe resort bylaw. Section seven subsection F three, sub- section seven, table two footnote eighteen and section seven B ten for site plan approval and special permit by the planning board for construction of one duplex in the residence B two district. The proposed development is shown on the plans entitled Site Plan, Site Development Plan, Multi-Family Reconstruction, fifty-one to fifty-three Bayview Drive in six sheets dated April thirteenth, twenty twenty, prepared by Hannigan Engineering Incorporated, Eight Monument Square, Leamester, Mass. O one four five three. The subject project is located westerly of Bayview Drive and consists in whole or in part of Shoe Tree Assessors Tax Pay fifty-seven, plot zero zero one, zero zero zero. A copy of the plans may be seen on the planning board website, HTTPS colon backslash backslash shoetrymass.gov slash nine oh five slash meeting dash materials.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Um, are the proponents in attendance?
Uh, this is Bill Hannigan, uh, from Hannigan Engineering, representing the applicant. And um, the applicants are both on the phone as well.
Okay, you're you're echoing a little bit for me, but um, I, we can try to go forward with this.
I've been, I've been there for a decent, so.
Fine.
Mr. Chairman, I can hear the echo pretty out loud too.
The echo is pretty good. Yeah, we'll, we'll try to get through this. So please uh, present if you could. I think Bernie will.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, I have the plans here that I can put up. Uh, one second. And can everyone see that?
They're building. Yes, I can see that. Hey, Mr. Hannigan?
Yes, um, so if you could just zoom out a little bit, Bernie?
Sure.
It's a given overall. Um, so the bottom of the page is uh, Lakewood segment. Um, the the top of the page is uh, Bayview Drive. Um, there's an existing building that's on the property right now that is a two-family uh, dwelling. Uh, the intention is to demolish that existing two-family dwelling and build um, a new two-family dwelling, unit A and unit B, as shown in the plans. Um, it's gonna be a pretty, pretty sizable improvement over to what's on site right now. Um, right now, there is, um, if we could, can we go back to the existing conditions plan, Bernie?
Certainly.
So there, there's the existing building. There's a a a myriad of of uh, outbuildings and sheds, um, stairwells and paved areas, et cetera. Uh, all that would be demolished as part of the demo project. Uh, we have, we have updated the plans to include a demolition plan, uh, which will include the removal of certain trees, uh, any erosion control installation. Um, that, that would be, I think, the next sheet, Bernie. If we, is this, is this the update? Yeah, this is the first revision. Okay. So the next sheet's the demo plan. We just go to that sheet next. This outlines um, the work that is gonna be um, removed relative to the pavement. Um, this will be raised, stairwells and walls will be removed. It also lo- lays out the erosion control limits of the project and highlights which trees would be removed um, within the property uh, for the proposed construction. Um, at the bottom, there are a couple of trees that are existing. Um, a twenty-two inch maple and I think it's a fifteen or eighteen inch maple. Those are in rough condition. Uh, we're proposing that those be looked at by an arborist prior to um, construction to see if those are just cut. Um, we probably leave the stumps in. Uh, we'd have to deal with that with conservation as well because of its proximity to the lake. Uh, but those two trees are relatively questionable. Um, so though that would be mainly all done during the demolition work uh, for the project. We go to the next sheet, please. So the proposed buildings, um, the the biggest um, aspect of what we're dealing with uh, for site plan and special permit, the special permits that we're looking at for the project are related to the floor area ratio. Uh, the floor area ratio is allowed to be thirty percent of the lot area. Um, and that's calculated by the gross floor area of all the buildings on the lot divided by the lot size. There's a provision within the uh, zoning by law, the planning board issue a special permit for increase of up to ten percent additional area uh, within the floor area ratio and we're applying for that um, ten percent, which would be equivalent to approximately thirty-three percent of the lot size. Uh, so on the bottom of the page, um, we have the areas calculated to be a slight up to a hair, Bernie. Uh, the lot coverage calculations are right there. The gross floor area on the existing dwellings, we have that information shown. The gross floor and the proposed dwellings, we have that shown as well. A total of six two hundred and sixty square feet are uh, currently proposed on the project. The allowed um, floor area ratio with the three, with the ten percent increase is sixty-three hundred and uh, three square feet. Um, so the the plans that we've submitted for the buildings, um, they are a preliminary design plan. Once we get into the final architecturals, these values may um, adjust slightly. Uh, obviously, we don't have much room for adjustment um, on the overall square footage, but we just want to make sure that uh, that that the number ten percent is what we're looking for for the available increase. Um, we're, we're slightly below that right now. I think there's like forty square feet in difference, but we want to make sure that the board understands is that uh, we're not going for exactly sixty-two hundred and sixty square feet, that if it ends up being, you know, sixty-two hundred and eighty-five square feet, that that, that that's included in the, in the application, uh, because there may be some tweaks that the architect makes uh, on the final building plan set. So we just wanted put that out there and make sure that um, everyone's on the same page that um, the final buildings will be, once the architect um, drafts the plans and and puts together the building plans for the building department to issue a building permit, that there may be a slight variation up or down. As a matter of fact, um, may become sixty-two fifty and sixty-two sixty, may become sixty-eight twenty-six. Um, so just so that we're, we're clear on that. I wanted to make that statement on the record. Um, just to uh, put that out there. So things are are within the side setback uh, requirements. Uh, there are some front setbacks that have been, um, I believe that those are granted a uh, special permit uh, for pre-existing non-conforming um, use. And Bob Hadden, uh, one of the applicants is on the line. He could, he could speak to that if there's a question on that, but I believe that that process is is completely with the planning board. Uh, we are proposing that each building or each unit would have its own uh, elevated deck. That in the bottom of the site, there'd be a, a series of tiered retaining walls uh, to gradually drop down from the uh, basement level um, down to the level along the lake. Because there would be those, each of those retaining walls, uh, if they exceed a certain height, would require some fencing on the pop on the top of them. Um, and that will be worked out uh, as we get to the final retaining wall design of those individual walls. Um, additionally, on each uh, east and west of each of the uh, buildings against the garage, there's kind of a wing wall um, to kind of uh, break the grade between the top side and the, and the lower side. Um, those walls also, depending upon their height, would require some sort of a barrier um, on top of them for for safety and protection. Um, the other uh, special permit that we're looking for is relative to section seven, table two footnote eighteen. The planning board may allow the construction of a side-by-side two-family dwelling with a special permit. Um, this comes into play relative to the construction foundation, uh, wall systems and roof systems of the building. Um, within the uh, the bylaw, it states that the the two units are structurally connected by a shared foundation, walls and roof. Uh, the preliminary design plans show that. The site plan also shows that uh, in that location where it's considered as proposed core foundation wall. Um, and obviously, the foundation is designed by others. Um, so during the building process plan, uh, the, the final design plans, whoop. Know what happened? There we go. Uh, during the final building permit process, the final plans will prepare to meet the intent of that section. Um, and obviously, the building uh, inspector or commissioner will have to uh, vet those plans to ensure that they do in fact meet the requirements of that section. Uh, but a special permit is also sought for that. Um, and that's part of the discussion tonight as well. Uh, and finally, a, a site plan re- approval is required for the project. Um, can, for, for the construction of a, a two-family dwelling. Um, and and I think overall, I think the permits in general require a special permit. I'm sorry, work requires site plan approval as well. Uh, we did receive department comments um, and and comments from various um, entities within the town. We've submitted back a letter to the board uh, along with these revised plans that outlines all of the uh, these comments and how they are being addressed on the project. Um, we, we have a couple of punchable items that we're still taking care of. One is relative to the horizontal and vertical control uh, being to the NAD nine speed three and NAVD nineteen eighty-eight datum. Um, that field work has been done. It's been processed, but it wasn't done in time to um, to, to add that information to the plans in time for this meeting. Uh, but that is gonna be uh, in, included in the um, the, the sets prior to construction. Uh, we did ask for a waiver from that and and when we, as part of uh, this uh, review by uh, Mr. Cahill, he asked for a, an updated um, submittal letter and documents, and that was also submitted. That's uh, originally dated April fourteenth, revised May fifth. And that basically goes through the discussion that I just had relative to the um, requirements of the, of the special permit needs that we had for the project as well as a site plan review. Um, he's asked that the, that the um, the uh, permits get, the application forms get updated to include, um, there was a, we had, we had one special permit in the original, original filing and there were actually two. Uh, the second being a side-by-side two-family. So that information's all been updated. And I believe, and I'll let um, Mr. Cahill speak to this, but I believe that that document is now um, um, offset with respect to its, its needs. It's part of that. We had originally requested a waiver for that, uh, the mass coordinate uh, NAD eighty-three, NAVD eighty-eight, uh, datum. Uh, we've actually withdrawn that in, in a, in the application package that we recently submitted. We included that original um, uh, application waiver request form with the word withdrawn um, across it. But it was very clear that that is no longer being asked for. Um, so the, if you go to the country, some of the numbers, um, the, the floor rela- uh, ratio, if we could scan down a little bit more, Bernie, back to those notes again.
Sure.
The, the floor ratio is based upon the lot size, uh, the lot The, the floor ratio is based upon the lot size. Uh, the lot size is nineteen thousand one hundred square feet. Uh, the, the total floor area allowed by right would be fifty-seven-thirty square feet, which would be thirty percent of that number. With the issue of the special permit, the planning board could allow an increase in the floor ratio to up to sixty-three oh three, which would be thirty-three percent. That's uh shown um on the bottom calculation for the uh, the total uh allowable uh square footage. On the present point is, we, when we submitted the application, there was a, a house plan um sketch that was put together. It's harder this. I don't know, Bernie, if you want to bring that up. But based upon um those um sketches, the uh, the, the square footage of the proposed buildings um comes in at sixty-two sixty, um, which is thirty-two point seven, just under thirty-three percent. Um, but as stated before, we want to make sure that the architect has the freedom and flexibility to be able to tweak the building um in final design to basically not go over the thirty-three percent. So the maximum building size allowed would be sixty-three oh three. Uh, but the intent is to, to show in the plans at this point in time, was so that the board could see what we're intending on constructing. Um, with respect to the site plan review requirements, I'm sorry, special permit review requirements, um, there are five or six main items that are, that are discussed as the, uh, as the building footprint. Um, so this would be the basement area of the um, of the, of each building, each, each unit would have, it would be, the other one would be a mirror image. So the, the twenty point by twenty room would be more or less a great room. There'd be a couple of other rooms off of that, uh, which could be used as your office or bedroom. The utility room, um, which we all, where all mechanicals are, and then a, a bathroom on that floor as well. So this would be, this would walk out onto the lower level. Um, the upper level would basically consist of the garage um access from the front um up to the first floor. And then the um, the kitchen, great room, um, master bedroom, suite um situation that could be, um, you know, lived in by the, by the applicant. Um, that would, those would both go out onto a deck uh that would overlook the lake, that would be um above. Uh, we have added stairs to the deck system. Um, the, the, it, it's still up in the air as to whether the, whether the desire to have stairs is, is going to be there because they were, the stairs were obviously start blocking some of the views from the lower level. Um, so in one of those, in one of the comments, the question came up about stairs, so we felt it'd be prudent to put stairs on the plans. And then if we decided not to build them, um, then we, we would, we could, we could do that without, uh, without coming back to the board for additional requests. Um, but those are, once again, those will be um more definitively designed with the architect once, once this cruel process is completed. Um, so with respect, with respect to traffic transfer, transportation, circulation, is an existing two-family home on the property right now, um, which will be removed, uh replaced with a new two-family. It's anticipated that traffic would be uh generally the same um as what's being generated right now, so therefore, it's not anticipated that it would have any adverse effect uh on the neighborhood or on the abutters. Um, stormwater proposed property is once again for a two-family dwelling uh per MASTD P stormwater management, um, compliance with CEP stormwater standards is not required. Um, but we do note that the um, there's actually decreasing in previous area on the project by our, our layout, so that's actually a benefit. Uh, that, that is, will be followed up with our conservation review um to, to go through the plans and, and um, and talk to them about that. Uh, one of the things we know the Schuessbury does like to see is uh the ability to capture roof runoff and, and discharge it into a dry well, which we've included into the project. Um, so that already is um, is incorporated into the design. Um, so stormwater really is, that no, there should be no negative effect uh on the abutters, the neighborhood and/or the, uh, the lake itself. Uh, public services, the property, once again, still a two-family structure, is going to be a two-family structure when it's, when it's done. Don't anticipate any changes uh with respect to demand, the public services or infrastructure. Uh, environmental impacts, the property is developed as, as a two-family and it will remain uh as such. It's anticipated, quite frankly, that the, the upkeep of the, of the, of the site will be much better than what's currently um on the site now. Uh, in, in, as it's residential in nature, it's not anticipated that there would be any um adverse effects of, of the prop, of the project, basically, because of the fact that it's a, it's a, it's residential in nature. Um, there wouldn't be any type of, one of the things that's in the, in the review is radioactive emissions, and we're not anticipating that to be an issue, an issue. Um, hazardous material storage, it's, it's anticipated that those will be consistent with typical residential buildings and, and home use. Um, it's not anticipated that they would be um, they would be adverse, uh, hazardous materials stored or utilized on the site. Um, community impacts, um, the architectural elevation and floor plans were provided for the review. Um, that's basically to give the, the, uh, the, the board a a feel of what these would look like. Um, the, the two-family residential unit is, is essentially from the street side of one level um building, uh, from the lake side would be two level. Uh, so from that perspective, it, it's a, it's a relatively innocuous uh building within the site. Um, so that, that kind of summarizes the stuff that is required relative for discussion for special permits. Uh, are there any questions, Carl, or any, any, just before I continue on the site plan?
Yeah, so, so you know that the site plan information most recent that you had, is, we haven't had any time to digest at all, right? I mean, it, it came over
Right.
two days ago, right?
Right. Yeah, we got, we got a, uh, we got the letter, um, we got the letter uh, uh, a week or so ago. We tried to turn everything back over. We understand that you haven't seen it yet. That's why I figured I'd, I'd go through everything that we're talking about.
No, I, I appreciate that.
I can stop.
Um, yeah, so if you want to continue, please do. Um, I think, um, knowing that this is going to be a continued hearing, and knowing that we haven't really had time to to review the, the documents that you're actually referencing, I'm not sure going too deep into them, other than maybe a fifty thousand foot overall for the remainder of your presentation would probably work.
Okay, so the site, what I, and I'll, I'll touch on that real quick. Basically, the site plan re, um, approval requirements talk about internal circulation queue and egress such as vehicular and pedestrian safety is protected within the site. It's, it's a single threat, two-family home, it, it's relatively innocuous, um, and, and we're not talking about a, a shopping center. So it's, it's really not applicable to some degree, but we do have, um, address that. Adequate parking, that's provided. The driveway openings are, are convenient and safe in relation to the patient sheet. There were three, now there's two. Um, so that's a better, a better situation. We believe that the building and the grading and the, the vegetated buffers are all um, uh, in line with a single family, a true family house. Um, lighting of the structures avoids illumination on, on joint properties. The lighting is going to be basically residential lighting on the building um for, you know, typical in front of the, the garage doors or the main entry in the backyard over the doors, et cetera. So there's not going to be any um site lighting per se on the project. Um, adequate access to reach for the fire, for fire and service equipment. Um, they're, the buildings are typical residential, closest street with driveways. That's usually the, the, the witness test on that. Um, all the utilities um are being provided, uh, water, sewers, municipal um and telephone and, and cable and, and electricity are through the, the, the various uh utility agencies. Um, so then you start talking about nuisance, noise, yeah, irrecoverable damage to sensitive environmental areas, and we believe that we're covering all of those things within the narrative and on the plans. Um, so I think that to cut this short, um, we, we feel that we've addressed all those through the, through the letter, through the narrative and on the plans themselves. We also um got a, a letter from uh the town engineer today. Um, I did have um some time to review that. I think a lot of those comments that were brought up by the town engineer have been addressed um by the, the plan revisions. I also acknowledge that there are some things that we need to add to the plans relative to that, uh, simple things like the setbacks, distance setback versus the setback line. He wants the physical numbers shown on the plan relative to um the uh building setbacks uh location of the existing system, and no saying it's going to be abandoned, stuff like that. And we're, and once again, we're going to be updating the grading to be on the uh, the datum or the, for the, for the town, so um we can accomplish all that within the next revision set and get those back for the next meeting. Um, I don't believe there's anything in the interest of keeping the meeting short. I don't believe there's anything more that I, I could go into. I think we've covered everything that is, would be in, in, in initial presentation. Um, and so if there are any questions at that point, uh, Mr. Chair, we can, we can try to address them. If not, we'll try to let everybody get out of here a little earlier.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Um, does anyone on the board have any questions? Uh, Mr. Rotalakis?
I, I don't have any questions. I just look forward to seeing the revised plan.
Mr. Jerry?
Uh, yeah, I would agree. I'm, I'm a little concerned, I guess, about uh this really being a two-family dwelling, but I guess we'll wait to see uh further architectural drawings, because it doesn't, it doesn't seem to meet the definition that was laid out here.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Jerry?
No, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas?
No, I have no questions this month, so we'll, uh, I think whatever will be done there will be a vast improvement for what's there now and go by, by I think regardless of what's put there, it will definitely be better than what's there now, so, but we still do need more.
Okay, thank you. And I, and I agree with the comments uh stated by the other board members. Uh, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard on this matter?
Uh, Steve, uh, Perna, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, Perna. Yes, you're sitting in on this from Perna. Perna, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah.
My apologies.
No, it's okay. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, uh, we look forward to wise information so that the board can evaluate it properly. The decision, you know, so um, maybe next, by next meeting, we'll get the information and I will be able to be there and make a decision.
Very good. Thank you, and my apologies again. Um, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard on this matter? This is the hard part of the virtual meetings. At least when you're in person, I can see hands raised. Given another second or two. Say, none being raised, uh, would entertain a continuance of this uh hearing?
I move that we continue the uh site plan approval and special permit for fifty-one dash fifty-three Bayview Drive until Thursday, June fourth, uh, two thousand twenty at uh seven P M.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Mr. Rotalakis?
Aye, in favor.
Mr. Jerry?
In favor.
Mr. Thomas?
In favor.
And Mr. Boulay is in favor as well. Thank you, and we'll see you next month.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Our next public hearing is a new public hearing, and Mr. Thomas will read the public notice.
The Schuessbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday evening, May seventh, twenty twenty, at seven P M to hear the application of Little Creek Realty Trust, seven oh nine Hammond Street, Brookline, Mass, oh two four six seven for site plan approval by the planning board as required by the Town and Schuessbury zoning bylaw, section seven, subsection F three to allow the construction of a day camp facility and associated infrastructure, commercial business zoning district. Proposed development is shown on the plans entitled Proposed Site Plan, Schuessbury, Massachusetts, three fourteen Grafton Street. Pen sheets dated March eleventh, twenty twenty, prepared by Quinn Engineering Incorporated, P O Box one oh seven, Paxton, Mass, oh one six one two, and sent by Kevin J. Quinn, P E. Setic property is located on the south side of Boston Turnpike and west of Grafton Street and consists in the whole, in whole or in part of Schuessbury Accessors Tax Pay thirty-four, plot zero three one zero zero zero. Copy of the plans may be seen on the planning board website, schuessymass dot gov slash nine oh five slash meeting dash materials.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Is the applicant present?
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Carl Holtgren, Quinn Engineering, on behalf of the applicant. Um, Alex Shabelski is the applicant, I believe, is on the call as well.
Okay, thank you. Please, uh, do your presentation.
Absolutely.
Bernie, if you can, you can drive.
I think Carl, Carl's gonna, Carl's gonna drive this one, I believe.
I'm gonna attempt to. Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, can you see that?
Yes, I can.
On your screen?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, so the property is located at three fourteen Grafton Street. Um, as I mentioned, the owner is Little Creek Realty Trust. Property gains four point seven acres, has frontage on Grafton Street and on Boston Turnpike. Boston Turnpike is Route nine. Access to the site is from Grafton Street. Uh, the picture that we're looking at here, uh, there's a big blue area, that's a, a bordering vegetated wetlands. Uh, the property is currently developed. There's a an existing structure on the site. Um, that's the sort of dark brown polygon that you see on the, on the screen. Uh, the current building is used for a child daycare facility. Uh, the daycare provides service for up to fifty-four children and has up to ten providers. Uh, the daycare is open from seven thirty A M until six thirty P M, Monday through Friday. And typically, all the children are dropped off before eight thirty A M. Uh, some of them dropped off up until nine, nine A M. Uh, typical of the pickup of the children typically begins around five P M. Uh, the number of required parking spaces for the daycare is fifteen, and that's based on the number of classrooms and providers and the number of children on site. The applicant is proposing to construct a new day camp facility on the property. Uh, a variance for the day camp was issued by the Z B A in January of this year for the use. It's not allowed in the, in the C B district, and so what you see on the plan here is the proposed site plan. Uh, the darker brown polygon is the new day camp uh building proposed right there. Uh, the day camp's going to provide service for up to fifty campers and has up to six providers. The hours are going to be nine A M until three thirty P M, Monday through Friday. Uh, the camp's going to be proposed to be open from the third week in June until the third week in August, so approximately two months of the year. Uh, the new building is forty by eighty. There's also a swimming pool proposed, which you see just above the um, the new building on the plan, and then also a tennis court. Uh, there's also a splash pad proposed. Uh, parking for the day camp is required. Uh, there's sixteen parking spaces required, so in total, between the daycare facility and the day camp facility, there's thirty-one parking spaces required. And we've got thirty-one total spaces proposed. There are two handicap accessible parking spaces proposed. One on, uh, if you're looking at the screen, the right-hand side of the existing building and one on the left-hand side of the existing building. In general, the site slopes up from Grafton Street. And so the B V W is sort of the low point of the site, the blue area uh between the building and Grafton Street. There's a retaining wall proposed behind the existing day camp facility. Uh, the dumpster pad is proposed along the southern property line. It's in a similar location to where the existing dumpster is located now. There's no new lighting proposed in the parking lot. We've submitted a waiver request of photometric plan requirement. Uh, so since there's no new lighting in the parking lot, uh, we're expecting lighting levels won't change. There are two new stormwater discharges proposed. Uh, one of them is just above the B V W, which you see there, sort of a light grayish triangle. Another one just to the left of the existing building, I should say, the east of the existing building. Uh, Graves Engineering provided review of the stormwater design. Um, they indicated the design's in order and there's no issues. The existing leaching area on site is proposed to serve the existing daycare and day camp use. Uh, the system has capacity to serve those uses, and it was inspected in February and passed inspection. Uh, we submitted plans to the Board of Health for review. Uh, the Board of Health agent reviewed the plan and indicated she doesn't have a concern with the proposal. We're going to submit final plans shortly, uh, for final approval by the board. There's a new water service proposed to the existing day, uh, to the proposed day camp facility. Uh, the existing service, the daycare, will remain. There's a stockade fence located along the southern side of the existing the existing parking area, so this is the existing conditions here on the southern side. There's a existing stockade fence. That's proposed to get relocated to accommodate the new parking layout. And we've also proposed arborites along the southern property line in the vicinity of the proposed building, which is sort of like the the greenish circles that you see on the screen here. Uh, we've received comments from Bernie and from Graves Engineering. We submitted an electronic version back to Bernie yesterday, uh, understanding that the board won't have a chance to review it before the meeting, uh, but I wanted to give Bernie a chance to review it in advance in case he had a chance to take a look at and any, any more comments. We've submitted a notice of intent to the Conservation Commission. That hearing has not taken place yet. We understand that the board won't close the meeting until that's closed. Uh, we've also submitted a stormwater permit app- We've also submitted a stormwater permit application. That permit has not been issued yet, but we hope with the clean memo from Graves Engineering, there won't be a holdup with that permit. In the last submission, we submitted architectural plans of the proposed building, which you see on the screen here. And if the board has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you for the presentation. Is there, I'll go around the horn. Mr. Rotalakis, any questions at this time?
No, just looking forward to seeing the most recent submissions.
Okay, Mr. Jerry?
No comments.
Mr. Thomas?
No comments.
And I don't have any comments other than to say that I don't have any major objections to what you're proposing right now. So I'm looking forward to the more detailed information that you're getting that'll be presented for next month. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard? I'm gonna go with probably not. So this will be a continued hearing. So if there is any one in the public that was not able to get through, please keep your questions till next meeting. So I will entertain a motion for a continuance.
I move that we continue the public hearing on the 314 Grafton Street, the Little Creek daycare site plan review until Thursday, June 4th, 2020, at 7:00 p.m.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Go around the horn for in favor. Mr. Rotalakis?
In favor.
Mr. Jerry?
In favor.
Mr. Thomas?
In favor.
And Mr. Boulay is in favor. Thank you. And we'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have the next, it's actually an amendment to our current proposed zoning bylaw changes. There is a new public hearing that Mr. Thomas will read the public notice.
I'm gonna recuse myself.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Mr. Rotalakis, we're recusing himself.
Are you ready, sir? You ready?
Yes, I just, sorry. Go ahead.
To see if the town will amend the zoning map of the town of Shrewsbury by changing all or a portion of the commercial business zoning district lying northerly of Holden Street and easterly of Clinton Street to a limited industrial zoning district as shown on the exhibit plan as on file with the Office of the Town Clerk or to take any other action relation thereto. The exhibit plan may be seen in the Planning Board page, Planning Board webpage
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Are the proponents here to present?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Donahue, please introduce yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mark Donahue from Fletcher Tilton, on behalf of the applicant, 160 Holden Street, LLC. With me this evening to answer any questions that the board may have are the principals of GFI Partners, Steve Grossman, and the Vice President of Development, Haley Marsh. GFI Partners owns 160 Holden Street, LLC, and acquired the land of the former Worcester Sand and Gravel back at the end of January of this year. GFI Partners is one of the region's largest developers and redevelopers of commercial industrial space. They have a number of properties that would be well-known to you in Worcester County and throughout the Commonwealth and other parts of New England. They are known for being able to take sites to develop them or redevelop them and to pick them appropriate locations for any number of businesses to thrive, create good-paying jobs and good, stable real estate tax revenue to various communities. In moving forward with the property here and looking at the evaluation of the property, it became clear that some changes might be necessary. Bernie, if I could ask you to pull up the acquired property slide first?
Yes, one second. Acquired, not existing. Okay, hold on. Mark, let me know if you can see it.
Yep. Thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, the focus for this evening's discussion will be on the property easterly of Clinton Street. GFI Partners has also acquired, as part of the property, the former owner, a tract which is westerly of Clinton Street off of Holden Street, which is already in the limited industrial zoning district. And so what you see on this colored plan in yellow is all of the property on the easterly side of Clinton Street, which has been acquired by my client. As you look to the planned bottom or southerly portion is where the Worcester Sand and Gravel current operation is predominantly within that particular area. The covered zoning, if you could pull up the existing zoning, Bernie? As you can see, is a little bit of a hodgepodge of different zones that run throughout the property. Along Clinton Street, there's a significant part of frontage, which is in the commercial business zone, and that tracks down all the way to the Holden Street little knob that you can see there. But it also abuts some residential property and some rural B property to the right. The far left-hand side, limited industrial properties, the property I spoke of earlier in looking at for future development by GFI Partners. So when looking at the uses to whether commercial business was appropriate or not, we began first by looking at the business or the purposes of the district intents as set forth in Section 3 of the zoning bylaw. And I think it's instructive as to how the land can be best utilized. Property that's in the commercial business district is defined in your bylaw as intended to provide goods and services for transients or tourists and non-consumer goods and services. Conversely, the limited industrial district is intended to be used by research laboratories, office buildings, and light industries. So when looking at the proper use of this land moving forward, what became clear to GFI was that the proper use is much more consistent with your definition of limited industrial uses. And I think that is shown by looking at some of the uses that are permitted, either as of right or by special permit, only within the limited industrial zoning district and would not be permitted in the commercial business district. Those uses include basic and applied research and development in electronics, computers, photonics, and communications; basic and applied research and development of pharmaceutical, biotechnology and biomedical fields, data storage, parcel distribution centers, research laboratories, warehouse, and distribution. And so when looking at it, Bernie, I could ask you to pull up the last slide.
Yep. One second.
Sure.
Can you see that, Mark?
Can, thank you. What we propose is to rezone significantly the property that is in the GFI property, currently in the commercial business zone, and to change that to limited industrial, not to make any change to the property that's currently in the rural B zone and also owned by GFI in some fashion. This plan includes beyond the large tract that's known as 160 Holden Street, other parcels that have been colored in the lavender, which are parcels that are controlled in one form or another by 160 Holden Street, LLC. We have, we have done outreach to all other property owners who own property in the commercial business zone that you can see there in the pink and asked them whether they wish to be included in the rezoning in any fashion. We've received some response from a couple of owners of that, and therefore those parcels would be included in it. But we're not suggesting to include any property of any third-party owner who is not expressly consenting to the development. I think there can always be a concern for those that are uninitiated in zoning as to what this means and how you can change the use. And I do want to talk about that a little bit and make sure that the board recalls that this is really the first step in a number of steps which would need to be taken by a developer before any active use could be put to this property for any of the uses within a limited industrial zone. As was seen previously in your agenda, for those who may have been watching, the town has special permit process that involve public hearings, site plan approval, there's a separate Conservation Commission, there's a separate land disturbance bylaw. So any number of requirements must be met as one goes through the development. And this does not simply allow one to move forward with any of the uses automatically allowed. And maybe more telling is that your zoning bylaw also contains fairly strict and specific performance standards, which are applicable only to activities within the limited industrial zoning district. And those create certain empirical standards for limitations on odor, dust, and smoke, heat, glare, vibration, and radiation, exterior lighting, storage, waste disposal, water supply, and the like. So when, if the zoning were to be changed by town meeting and GFI were to come forward with plans, we would need to go through a very active public hearing process to have those plans vetted. And it would be the burden upon GFI to demonstrate that the proposed use would comply with all of the various performance requirements of the limited industrial zone. And so this is really only the first step for what we believe is really more appropriate development of this site. Uses that fall within commercial business tend to be more of a retail mix. This site benefits because of its proximity to Route 290 for mode of transportation. And I think for the uses that I described that are also allowed within the limited industrial district, it can benefit and therefore the town can benefit by being its proximity to the medical center, its proximity to the existing biotech park in Worcester, and its proximity to the new biom manufacturing park, which is just starting to come out of the ground just over the hill in Worcester. You've got very tight proximity to those. You've got easy access to those properties. And therefore, it's quite possible that any number of developers might choose to take advantage, if for nothing else, the much lower tax rate in Shrewsbury than be building right in Worcester while still having the benefits of creating the ecosystem that often follows research and development type of activities. So we're very excited about the opportunity. And we would ask this board, as part of its process here, to recommend the rezoning of the map change as requested to the town meeting when it is held as scheduled by the town. Mr. Goodman, Ms. Marsh, and myself would be glad to answer any particular questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Donahue. Whereas this is one of many of the articles that will be placed on town warrant whenever town meeting is going to be held, you need, please understand that this hearing will remain open until such time as we get close to town meeting before a recommendation from the planning board is going to be submitted. One of the biggest concern, and you touched upon it a little bit, was concern from the abutters as far as what possibly is going in there. And you gave some overview of what allowed in that use, but I didn't know if maybe you had maybe a little bit of an understanding of what you think is a possible use. Because that is definitely going to be a question that the residents are going to ask, in my view.
Well, obviously, it's a little hard to try to project what uses would be. You know, the site itself lends itself because of its proximity to 290 to businesses that would benefit from having immediate access to modes of transportation. So those could be warehouse and distribution-type facilities in some fashion. It does have, as I said, the proximity to the brain power of, that's just on the other side of the lake. And therefore, it could be a convenient location for any of those uses. It's a site in an area, and we think it benefits. One of the attractive pieces is there simply are not that many large industrial zone sites that are available from eastern Massachusetts running to central Massachusetts along the primary corridor in some fashion of the turnpike. And being able to therefore have the flexibility to be able to meet requirements in a site, in a site that can work well, we believe, for appropriate development, means all those are open. So, you know, those would be kind of some of the targets as the development moves forward as to who I assume they'll be marketing to. Ms. Marsh can certainly maybe lend some more information as to what she could see in her travels in the marketing world right now.
Hey, Ms. Marsh, would you like to expand just a little bit?
I mean, I think that Mark said it, you know, just as well as I could. The proximity to 290 there is very attractive. We've seen around that area similar projects in this zone district being built. And I think it's important to also understand that we believe that the site, as its existing zoning is, as commercial business, is not conducive to, you know, it's highest and best use. And, you know, a part of the development plans will certainly be to clean up the existing site there. I think if you're a resident and a butter of the Worcester Sand and Gravel operation, you can drive by the site and see the huge mound of debris that's built up over decades. And that's one of the huge benefits of getting this rezoned and cleaned up is to consolidate their operation and really make it, you know, more attractive.
Okay, thank you for that. Does anyone on the board have any questions? I'll go around the horn first. Mr. Jerry?
No questions right now.
Hey, Mr. Thomas?
No, sir, no questions.
At this time, I do not have any additional questions. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to be heard on this?
Hello?
Yes. Could you please identify yourself?
Yes, this is Lisa Bratton. I live on David Road. I've been here for close to 30 years. And when I first moved in, Worcester Sand and Gravel was trying to sell their land to develop a mall. And part of the problem were issues concerned with traffic. Also, I don't know if the new owners are aware that a number of wells are between their land and Lake Consignan. And the recharge area for those wells for the town of Shrewsbury is right under the property that you have bought. Now, that was part of the problem with developing a mall in that location because they were gonna be putting parking lots in the recharge zone to the wells. Now, I addressed this to the planning board. You've put in a number of parks throughout the town. And my question is, why haven't you considered this area? I have a copy of a study that was done. And why haven't you considered protecting the land around the wells by developing open area rather than converting it from commercial to industrial, which seems that it won't protect the water supply for the wells?
I thank you for that. Fortunately, this board is not in a position to purchase land. That's a conversation you should probably have with the town manager. But, Mr. Donahue?
If I might, Mr. Chairman, yes. Ms. Bratton has done me a favor by reminding me that I did want to bring the board up to date of discussions that we have had with the town with regard to two wells that the town has. There are, on the plan, you may have noticed a little hammerhead that stuck out, and that was just white. That's one of the town wells. There's another one right in that immediate area. And we've already met with Mr. Mizikar and Ms. Lasz to understand what their concerns are about their need or desire to improve wellhead protection. And we have committed to work with them in the design of the development in a way to improve the town's control in one manner or another of the expanded area of the wellhead protection. In fact, GFI has experience in that field in that they are currently working in the community of Franklin and have a similar site that abuts a similar situation of a town-owned drinking water supply and are working proactively with the town as to a matter of development that grants to the town additional wellhead protection. So we're aware of the point that Ms. Bratton makes, and it's a good one. It will be a constraint on the development and will create obligations on it. But more importantly, we've committed to work with the town moving forward to also improve the town's requirements, which is being pushed by DEP. improve the town's requirements, which is being pushed by DEP to have the town be able to control its wellhead area more aggressively.
Are they going to have an environmental impact study done on the proposed, you know, sites that they'll put in for the limited industrial plan?
Through you, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Donahue.
Certainly, environmental reports or environmental studies are generally part of any type of development. An impact study is required even under the local bylaw, and it is generally the practice of the planning board and planning staff to look at those factors of impact, such as traffic and the like. There is a separate process that's conducted by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts called MEPA, or the Massachusetts Environmental Protection Act, which is triggered based upon a certain threshold of development. And it would not be a surprise if this development ended up hitting at least one or more of those thresholds along the way.
Does GFI have any examples online of what they're doing in other locations, like you mentioned in Franklin?
I don't know what the Franklin site is on. The website for, if I might, is www.gfipartners.com. And you can see on there some developments that they are currently doing and see those type of properties that they are currently working on or have within their holdings and some of the nature of the users that they have. It's a very impressive look at a variety of users in the Commonwealths.
My last question has to do with the, there's a hill behind David Road and a number of the roads on the other side of Clinton Street that's between their two properties. Now, there's a lot of wildlife that lives over there. They're not planning on developing that hill area at all?
If the hill area you're referring to is the property west of Clinton Street for the Holden Street, that's, if the rezoning is permitted, then that would be certainly phase two of the development. The focus, if the rezoning is permitted, would be to, as Ms. Marsh indicated, kind of get a twofer, develop the easterly side of Clinton Street, which would help to achieve cleaning up the site dramatically as part of that reuse.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay.
Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to be heard?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, please identify yourself.
My name is Deborah Saper, and I live on Bosworth Road. My concern with this is the noise, particularly truck noise. At this time, we experience a lot of this. The trucks are rolling and moving then out of that, that site all night. Tonight, I was awakened at 3:00 a.m. Last night, it was 11:00 p.m. when the trucks are moving. It became a warehouse site. I'm concerned that we're going to have 24/7 trucks rolling in and out and affecting our quality of life, our area.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue, were you going to mention, I couldn't tell if somebody was chiming in.
Glad to. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity. I guess two points. GFI acquired the site, I believe, on either January 28th or 29th. So it's going to obviously need some time, and the current situation hasn't helped that in any fashion to be able to change or modify operations in a meaningful fashion. So I can't really speak to what is going on presently on the site as that moves forward. When you speak of noise, it has two different components as one thinks about development or redevelopment of the site. And those two components that go directly to the resident's question, I think, Mr. Chairman, is first that the zone, that is a practice that is part of either site plan approval or a special permit. As a general rule, the board imposes hours of operation for any construction moving forward in an operation. So during the course of construction, hours are limited, and obviously the hours of operation would depend upon the user. But even the user and the issue is protected because your zoning bylaw has applicable to it a specific provision that requires the muffling of noise when measured at a certain distance at property lines or zoning district lines and establishes an empirical requirement that an applicant must meet in order to demonstrate no increase of that between the hours of 7:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. off of what's referred to as ambient sound level. So not to get into details of it, but I think that you're fortunate that the town of Shrewsbury has already proactively, for limited industrial properties, taken into consideration that noise can be a factor that needs to be controlled and have both the mechanism to do that and as a matter of practice has done it in any number of developments in the past.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to be heard at this time? Okay, I'm going to take that as a no. As I mentioned at the start of this, this is the first of many of the town articles. Mr. Donahue, thank you for, and Ms. Haley, thank you for presenting today. We're like, we are going to continue this hearing. This is just one subset of this hearing, so at this time, you can mute or stay on and watch if you would like, but we're going to move on to the next articles for.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so the next, Bernie, if you just want to go through the next ones, we can, we've spoken of these on a couple of occasions already, but we can highlight them and.
Right, yeah. So the way we're going to do it with all of the zoning articles, including the one that was presented tonight, well, first let me step back and just say that, just a reminder to the board and the public that our role in adopting new zoning bylaws or changes is one of offering a recommendation to town meeting. So the board, planning board, does not make the zoning changes. The planning board offers its recommendations based on what it's heard from applicants or if it's the board itself making the argument, our own arguments. So that's important to say going forward. We have gone over these before, and we're going to keep all of the zoning article recommendation public hearings open until we hear from the town manager's office and the board of selectmen when the town meeting is going to be held. Hopefully, I am hoping that it's going to be later this summer, but we don't know. So the best thing for us to do is to continue the public hearings until such a time as we get notifications. So the board is not going to be asked to provide that recommendation until we know when, because there's no point. But what this does provide us is extra time or more time than we usually have to review these articles. So the ones that we went over last time were for the Town Center zoning district. I know, being cooped up at home, it seems like years ago, but it was just a month ago we were talking about it, and two months ago when I presented from A to Z the whole town zoning, the Town Center zoning articles, excuse me. So I thought each time we would, and we'll probably do a quick refresher closer to when town meeting is announced. But for now, I think what we'll do going forward is to just open it up, see if anyone in the public or members of the board have reviewed it, had a great idea, had some suggestions, and if not, move on to new business. So with that, I will leave it to Mr. Chairman to open up the public hearings. I think I would do it pretty much B through F as shown on the agenda, and if there are no comments, then continue B through F to June 4th.
It would be actually A through F, right? A is now.
Is it? Oh, yeah. If you haven't continued it yet, then yeah.
Right, it'll all be part of it.
Right.
Okay, so based on Mr. Cahill's input, I would like to move down to point B, article regarding the use regulation schedule for marijuana cultivator and craft marijuana cultivator cooperative. Does anyone on the board have any comments to add at this point? Mr. Rotalakis?
No, I think it's just a text amendment. I think I'm okay with it, you know? Maybe I'll drill down on it as we get closer to a town meeting, when and if that occurs.
Thank you, Mr. Jerry, I'm sorry, I didn't need to cut you off.
No, that's it.
Okay, very good. Mr. Jerry?
No comments.
Mr. Thomas, I almost forgot your name, sorry, Jay.
No comments right now, sir.
Yeah, I have no comments to add at this time either. We'll move to articles, point C, article dealing with the establishment of districts, the district intent, section four, table one, use regulation schedule related to the establishment of a town-centered zoning district. Does anyone on the board have any, I'm sorry, I should have asked if the public had any. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to add comment relative to the marijuana cultivator or the marijuana cultivator cooperative? I'm going to go with no, so we'll move on to the next one, which is dealing with the use regulation schedule, dealing with the town-centered zoning districts. Anyone on board have questions on that? Mr. Rotalakis?
No, again, I guess I just reiterate my comments. What I said, I believe, at the last, it does seem like a while ago, that like the Lakeway Business District, you know, I think Bernie's done a good job of kind of tweaking the bylaw and the map. But I think until we get a user, you know, a lot of this stuff, although it's important, doesn't really come into focus. And most of the time, like, when we got a user after 15 years, 10 years in Lakeway, that's the Lakeway Comments Project, the developer, you know, requested further amendments to the bylaw. So I'm not that, I'm not that excited about or concerned about some of these text amendments at this time.
Okay, thank you for that. Mr. Jerry?
No comments.
Okay, Mr. Thomas?
No comments.
And I have no comments. I will ask, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to add any comments relative to the Town Center zoning district at this time? I'm sorry. Not hearing none. Let's go to point D. This article deals with area frontage, yards and lot coverage requirements, off-street parking, loading areas, site plan related to the establishment of the town-centered zoning district. The next one, two, three of these all deal somewhat with the Town Center zoning district. So I guess maybe we can include them all together. One has to deal with the off-street parking, the other has to do with the development of sites and locations of buildings, and the final one has to do with the zoning map associated with the Town Center zoning district. If it makes sense and everybody's in agreement, I'll take questions or comments on any or all of those. Mr. Rotalakis?
I'm in agreement as to handling them in bulk. I guess I just, with respect to C, D and E, I would just reiterate my prior comment or just incorporate my prior comment. With respect to F, that's the zoning map, and, you know, I think that Bernie's done a good job of looking at or incorporating what the outer limits or inner limits or limits of the town center are.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Jerry?
Mr. Jerry is recusing himself from these.
Oh, I apologize.
Yeah.
That's right, I forgot about that last time. Thank you for that, Mr. Cahill.
That's okay.
Mr. Thomas?
Again, my only concern is the off-street parking. I voiced my opinion a couple of times about it. Other than that, I am okay with it.
Very good, thank you. And at this time, I do not have any additional comments to add. With that, I will entertain a motion to continue this public hearing.
All the public hearings.
All of them.
All the zoning public hearings, yeah.
Because I recused myself, I think someone, with respect to the Worcester Sand property, I think someone else should file.
Okay, we could, yeah, that's true. And then Tim for the other ones.
That leaves me.
So Jay, if you could do the continuance for the first one, for the Worcester Sand and Gravel, and then Steve can do the rest, because he'll be back for the rest.
Right.
Okay, you don't want to do them all at once, you want to do the first one.
Because we have, we have two recusals, one for each of the, each section, so if, just do this at this time.
Okay. I propose that we continue the public hearing about the article, Town of Shrews zoning map, commercial business district, rezoning to the June 4th meeting, 2020.
Do I have a second? I do need one second. Can I? You can second that, right? Mr. Jerry, okay. Okay, I'm sorry, you're breaking up.
My computer's tired.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, I have a move in a second. All in favor, Mr. Jerry?
In favor.
Mr. Thomas?
In favor.
And Mr. Boulay is in favor. I'll entertain a motion for the remaining articles.
Related to the Town Center.
Well, related to the Town Center, correct.
I move that we continue the public hearing on the remaining articles relative to the Town Center, which is shown as, you know, little B through little F inclusive on our agenda until our next meeting, which is Thursday, June 4th, 2020 at 7:00 p.m.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Mr. Rotalakis?
I'm in favor.
Mr. Thomas?
I am in favor.
And Mr. Boulay is in favor as well. Okay, thank you. We now move to new business. The first item on new business is to deliberate and vote for the decision of 257 Main Street. So we closed this hearing last month. We've had some time to review prior hearings, concerns that we brought up throughout the I guess I can start. I'll reiterate my concerns that I've kind of said from the outset. I'm a bit, very concerned about the circulation, both relative to internal as well as external to the site, specifically around external, the left-hand turns into the site. I've mentioned on nearly every occasion, the density issue is still a concern of mine. And I guess I'll leave it at that, and I'll let somebody else add some other comment. Mr. Rotalakis?
Well, preliminarily, the one thing that has always bothered me, and I know that the one thing that's always bothered me about this project is the fact that we have a New England Power National Grid easement that runs through a substantial portion of the site, including the frontage for, you know, impacts the frontage on a couple of lots, most significantly that lot which is designated, which is in the multifamily zone. And also, it also impacts the open space. So, you know, I have concerns about that. I have concerns about particularly the width of the proposed easement, the common driveway, and the amount of cars it would purport to service. I also have concerns about the way that the common driveway would intersect with Main Street. That is a kind of a hinky intersection with Old Mill Road, Main Street and Irida Road, where Irida Road and Old Mill Road don't line up. And close to where the driveway would spill out, there are four lanes of traffic, two in the eastbound, two in the westbound. And the applicant really provided us nothing that was illuminating as to how this project would impact, maybe not from a level of service, but from a safety standpoint. I have grave concerns about people exiting this project and attempting to head east towards the center of town. I just don't think it's going to work during peak traffic hours at all, and have concerns even during off-peak traffic hours. So those are my primary concerns. So th- those are my primary concerns with the project. I, I think given how dense. It is. You know, the applicant is looking to uh, have uh. Eight units. Excuse me, six units, you know, assuming two cars, a unit. Being serviced by an eight foot right away. Just doesn't seem to make much sense. It's too dense. Um, and the internal traffic search, circulation relative to the multi-family just, it's too tight. So those are my concerns.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Jerry?
Um, I, I would echo what Mr. Rotalakis uh, has said. I think that um, the density is clearly an issue. I think the proposed multi-family structure um, is not in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, which is primarily single family homes in that. In that area and um, the number of units proposed, given the, the size of the common driveway would, would present an issue. Um, and of course, as, as Mr. Rotalakis mentioned, I think my primary concern is. Um, vehicles taking a left turn into the property or a left turn out of the property. Given the, the. Busyness of that road and that proximity to the intersection, those left turns would be, would be very problematic, given the number of units and amount of traffic. Generated.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Thomas?
Again, same, same thing that. Mr. Jerry, Mr. Rotalakis have said in what I've been saying since the first meeting that we had is the density um. The, you know, the massing of the, of the, the old word, the massing of the uh, multi-family structure is really my issue with it. It doesn't fit in with the character of the neighborhood. The left hand turns, it is, it's more than the traffic count is the issue. Um, the stopping to turn left in or out of the project seems to be what would cause the. Traffic issue and the question being is. The, my question, well, my concern is that not so much the amount of cars generated. On Main Street, it's the traffic it's going to generate on Main Street when someone is taking a left hand turn into the property. And stopping the traffic on Main Street during peak hours.
Okay, so does any, has anybody given thought to um. Just the special permit relative to the common driveway? Does anybody have any specific comments uh, that they would like to talk to about that? Uh, Mr. Rotalakis?
Well, again, uh. You know, I, I think I, I, I kind of mentioned these, but I don't think that the common driveway would is eight or 10 feet wide. That would propose to service a. Service a uh, a, a four unit building, keeping in mind that the applicant. Uh, has applied for a six unit building, but kind of orally amended the application seeking a four unit building. Either a four unit or a six unit building. I just don't think it's going to work and that, 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 that's just within the site. Let alone when you get outside the side of your, you, 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 you start looking at what's going on at, on Main Street, Old Mill and I Rita Road. I, I think it's a safety issue. So tho- those are my concerns about the common driveway itself. And again, you know, the applicant. Has provided us little. In, in the way of uh. Of uh. Information or meaningful information, particularly relative to traffic, so. I, I, I just ha- have a hard time uh, supporting the application. For the special permit uh, for the common driveway as it currently stands.
Right, uh, Mr. Jerry?
Uh, I echo the same comments. I have nothing in addition to what Mr. Rotalakis stated.
Uh, Mr. Thomas?
Again, same, same here.
All right, um, I, I'll take a different tact on, on this. I'm not necessarily opposed to the common driveway to get access to the, the back lot. I think the problem that I have is the density or the number of units back there. I, I think that maybe a, a, a single duplex or something like that could be supported back there. It's, it's far less of the vehicles. Still, it doesn't alter the fact that there is a safety concern, no matter who's coming out of that driveway at any given point in time, but. By um, if we could. Limit the number of units coming off of that con- common driveway, I think that would, that would be um, beneficial. For uh, for the applicant in, in terms of getting access to the backside of this uh, of this property. I don't know if anybody has any uh, thoughts on that.
That, that could be a reasonable. Solution to, to this issue, you know, a duplex would give them. Would ameliorate some of my concerns about open space. Um, and certainly would lessen the uh. Traffic on the easement itself, the common driveway, as well as traffic spilling over into Main Street. Um, that. Is probably something. That I think I could support, recognizing that uh. This project isn't the multi-family zone and uh, they're seeking site plan approval in it, in the, in the operative language on that is approved. So I, I guess that would be a condition that uh. I could support. That the applicant would have to come back. Um, that I, 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 I would approve the multi-family lot, or I would recommend approval of the multi-family lot for a duplex. With the understanding the applicant would have to come back for, for the site plan review.
I understand that. Um, you have any other comments or you all said?
I, I think that could work.
Okay. Mr. Jerry? Any thoughts on that?
I think uh, I think that's a very reasonable suggestion and I think um, that would alleviate. Uh. A lot of my concerns if it was to be limited to a duplex. Uh, in the back instead of the four or six units that were suggested. I could support that.
Okay, Mr. Thomas?
Uh, I, I agree. It would definitely alleviate some of the traffic. I do obviously think that the applicant would have to come back for. What he's required to come back for site plan approval and um. To see what this one, if he's willing to do this one unit, what one duplex would look like. It would certainly help. Um. It is in a multi-family zone and. He's well within the zoning. Rights to do it and he conforms to all the setbacks with one unit, so. Um, I think he's ready to do something there. Just, I think four or six was way too much. But I, I, I could go with that.
I agree with that. So.
I don't think, I don't thi- can I, one day, I don't think the abutters are going to be happy, but again. The abutters have to recognize that the applicant's property is in the multi-family zone. And uh. This is uh, a component of this is site plan approval and again, the operative uh, word is approve with conditions, so. I think it strikes a balance. Good suggestions.
All right, so how would we go about this? Would we go about um. Drafting some type of decision that says that the. Um, common driveway special permit? So they would be two separate, Bernie, this would be two separate motions, correct?
Um, yeah, well, so you would actually have um. It's site plan special permit, but two special permits, so you'd have a vote for the special permit for the common driveway. And then you would have a special permit for the multi-family, which requires a special permit. Um, and site plan, right? So that would be your um. You'd have actually, so I would say three votes, we're going to do, I would do it as one decision. So within one decision, we would have two blocks for voting and a site plan line for Jay to sign on, um, typically for site plan, so we'd have two blocks. Um, I've taken notes here, I think I've got all of your findings down, so what would put in for findings? Um, for the, if the way the board is looking like you want to go with one duplex, that would be done as a condition of the decision. So the condition of the decision would say um, the site, I believe it's uh, two dash three R, something like that. Uh, I'll look at the plan, um, would be, would be restricted to uh, no more than a uh, single two family dwelling. So that's how we'd write it up. So do the findings, which were the findings about your concerns, about left turns, about uh, safety. Uh, not safety, but kind of the inconvenience of those left turns and the, um, I think uh. I have note about density and character of neighborhood, so those would be your findings. The condition then would be um, with one, one duplex, so one two family dwelling, so. So just to reiterate, first vote, common driveway, second vote, multi-family with the condition. That it's only a duplex. Um, and then um, overall site plan. So three votes. Two, two special permits, one with a condition and then site plan.
So now, correct, I'm trying to get, make sure that we don't inadvertently approve a site plan that I'm not in favor of. So if the site plan is currently showing four units. Would we, 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 we would still vote on it, but that would be a.
Well, I guess.
Right?
Tip, I guess technically, because of the site plan falls within the special permits for both of them, you probably just need the two special permit votes. We probably don't need to do a site plan vote. The condition of the special permit automatically modifies that site plan. We've already closed the meeting, you've closed the public hearing, so you can't open it again to get a revised site plan. The final plans that get submitted to my office for a building permit will have to show the conditions of the decision, which would be limited to one duplex.
Well, if we're concerned about making a mistake, we're still not out of time. Why doesn't, uh, why don't we continue the public hea- why don't we continue the deliberations till our next public meeting, right? We got ninety days?
Ninety days, so yeah, we could do that. I can draft up the decision. Uh, we can review it at the next meeting and vote on it then. We have ninety days, so we're only at not even thirty days since the. April, I forget, seventh meeting? No, it was April 5th or something. Um, yeah.
I think that's.
Whatever the board's comfortable with, we can do.
I, I would, in my personal opinion, I think it's a great point, Steve. I, I'm one, I like to kind of read. What's going on, especially when it's a little convoluted like this one is. Uh, my, my preference would be to have a draft decision in front of us to, to review. And if we wanted to make additional changes, we could do that and that, like we do with all other uh, decisions uh, that come before the board. Um, that's just my opinion. I'll ask the board if they agree or disagree, uh, Mr. Rotalakis?
Uh, I am in agreement.
Okay, Mr. Jerry?
I think that's a reasonable approach.
And Mr. Thomas?
In agreement.
So I need a vote for uh, continuation of deliberations till May, uh, June 7th. Uh, I think it's the 7th, right?
June 4th. I, I move that we continue. I move that we continue the deliberations on the 257 Main Street project. A site plan approval and two special permit applications until Thursday, June 4th, 2020 at 7:00 PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I'll go around the horn. Uh, Mr. Rotalakis?
In favor.
Mr. Jerry?
In favor.
Mr. Thomas?
In favor.
And Mr. Boulay is in favor, so we'll do that. Uh, right, next item for new business is discuss and issue a bond for 360 Hartford Turnpike, uh, Mr. Cahill.
Um, I believe I forwarded you the bond. Is that? It should have been in the online folder.
I, I, my apologies. I, I can look at it right now, though. And on the computer. Just what it is. Uh, if you want to uh, maybe it's long waiting on this, uh, let's see. Okay, so this is a bond. For 360 Hartford Turnpike in the sum of $3,407.05. Do I have a motion?
I, I move that we uh, accept uh. And execute the bond as uh, just discussed by the chairman.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Mr. Rotalakis?
I'm in favor.
Mr. Jerry?
In favor.
Mr. Thomas?
In favor.
And Mr. Boulay is in favor. Thank you. And the next new business uh, item I'll leave for you to explain to us, uh, Mr. Cahill.
Right, so um, in order to accept electronic signatures of the board, the board has to itself approve them. So these are think, using things like DocuSign, um, so that you can sign the decisions remotely uh, going forward. Um, so basically, it would just be a motion to accept electronic signatures of the board, so the board itself needs to approve that, that you're okay with it.
Okay, Mr. Rotalakis, would you like to make that motion?
I, I move that we uh. Accept uh, the electronic signatures of the board members in their various capacities. Uh, for the purposes of effectuating the decisions of the shoes replanning board.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Rotalakis?
I'm in favor.
Mr. Jerry?
In favor.
Mr. Thomas?
I am in favor.
And Mr. Boulay is in favor as well, thank you. Um, I have an old business item up here, uh, Mr. Cahill?
Uh, yeah, that one's going to be continued to the next meeting, the um. It hasn't come back from Board of Selectmen yet or Engineering, so we're going to continue that one as well. It's a recommendation for road acceptance at town meeting.
So we don't have, we need to do anything with this, for this here?
Uh, no, you don't need to continue it. I'll just continue to put it on the agenda until um, we get the information.
We, we haven't gotten a layup plan, right?
We had, no, we haven't received anything yet uh, with that much detail.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I can give you a quick update if you want. We, we're pretty close. We were just. You know, finally reviewing the plan to the land surveyor and just making sure that, you know, all the required. Needs and, you know, information and profiles are correct, so we uh, we've sent our final comments back to the land surveyor there, are currently producing the my last forest, so I would hope by the next meeting, we will. We'll have that ready.
Very good, thank you. And the only last item I have here is a notice of correspondence. Um, I remember we brought up at the last meeting. For some elevations for the. The residential units over at Market Basket and I think everyone got a chance to review that. I was concerned that we were going to lose.
I, I'm going to recuse myself.
Uh, this is just a conversation, we don't have to do anything with this, Steve. Uh, it's just a photo that came in. Uh, just to say that there is still going to have, I forgot the term I'm using, but the.
Footprints?
Footprint, the site, the sot bag, so it doesn't look like a flat front of the building. So they provided that information and that's what this correspondence represents. So with that, I have nothing left on my agenda. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we conclude this evening's public hearings.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Rotalakis?
I'm in favor.
Mr. Jerry?
In favor.
Mr. Thomas?
I am in favor.
Mr. Boulay's in favor and I thank you all for attending this evening and uh, thank you, the audience for uh, tuning in as well. Thank you, we'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.